Dr. PJ Brennan, the Chief Medical Officer and Senior Vice President of the University of Pennsylvania Health System with us this evening and out of respect for his time and we'll have him go next and the girls can follow. Dr. Brennan, thanks. Thanks again. We really appreciate you taking the time to be with us this evening and it's all yours.
Thanks, Mr. Feinberg. It's my pleasure to be back with you. Good evening, everyone. I'll touch briefly, I'll make a statement first and touch briefly on the pandemic data. So that we're all on the same page and I'll make some comments where about where I think the pandemic is going and then we'll take some questions. So as you all know, we are over 11.5 million cases now with more than a quarter million deaths. We're closing in on nearly 200,000 new cases a day and 80,000 hospitalizations daily. Pennsylvania is clearly a hotspot now with nearly 500 new cases per day. And in Philadelphia, the daily case count last week exceeded 1,000 new cases on three days, but has fallen back a little bit this week into the 900s. I think it's too soon to take any solace in that or draw any conclusions that the tide has turned. It doesn't appear to have done so. In Delaware County, the incidence is now over 230 cases per 100,000, which is up from 92 just four weeks ago and was much more, much more, much lower than that a few weeks earlier. The test positivity rate, which was under 3% in the county at one point, rose to 4.7% four weeks ago and is now around 9.4%. In the county, there have been, there have now been more than 1,900 cases of COVID-19 in the first two decades of life, the school age population. And that's probably an undercount based on insufficient testing early on. The 20 to 29 year old age group is the most commonly affected now, and this reflects a major shift in age and partially explains the lower mortality seen in this phase. In the township, on November 9th, there had been 244 COVID-19 diagnoses in the previous 30 days. But by Tuesday of this week, the 17th, eight days later, that 30 day number had grown to 316 in the previous 30 days. That's an increase in the 30 day count of 72. So we're averaging as of this week, more than 10 new cases a day, whereas we had been at eight new cases a day just a week earlier. As a frame of reference, we bottomed out on this measure at approximately 75 cases per 30 days several months ago. So we're more than fourfold higher now. Hospitals are busy, ICU beds are in demand, but hospitals are managing for now. Hospital capacity is one measure of the ability of the community to handle the pandemic. When school returned in person for in-person instruction in early October, we were in the best position we had been since the beginning of the pandemic with test positivity rates around 3% and the incidence well under 80 cases per 100,000. Positivity rates have tripled since and the incidence rate has increased nearly sixfold. I wrote an op-ed last week that was published in The Inquirer and in it I encouraged civic leaders to take appropriate steps to control the pandemic in the community. The point was to focus on the sources of transmission. The options of civic leaders are limited by recent court decisions. But the intent, the attention in terms of control measures seem to be directed towards schools and hospitals. And I think that's understandable if that is all you can regulate, but schools have not been major drivers of the pandemic, although there have been some in-school transmissions. Decisions regarding schools are still in the hands of local districts. Major drivers have been of the pandemic in this phase have been small private gatherings involving people from more than one household, athletic team activities, Halloween parties, meals, break rooms in particular, where people take off their masks, sit too close together and socialize, and some office settings where there has been a return to work. Household contacts are the major source of transmission and household exposures convert to infections at a much higher rate than other exposure situations. At this point, we are justifiably concerned about Thanksgiving gatherings and travel and then the Christmas and New Year's holidays. In the summer, we were concerned about Labor Day and we messaged about that a lot and we didn't see a bump. Perhaps that can happen again if everyone is cautious. We would like to keep the students in school, but the challenge may be as much about staffing as it is transmission in school and perhaps more so as we see more staff infected in the community. I don't see conditions improving in the short term. I expect it will get worse. I expect there will be more in-school transmissions as we see more transmissions in the community and it will be hard to hold it back as community cases mount. That will further impact staffing levels and it will also impact the ability and the strain on staff to do the contact tracing that is necessary within a building. And more stringent precautions have barely gone into effect. So I think that a decision to go all virtual is defensible at this point and appropriate given the thresholds that have been exceeded. Schools that have continued to maintain high levels of adherence to precautions and distancing still have the leeway to stay open in Delaware County. As you know, Montco has gone virtual. The Philadelphia Department of Health has ordered closure of high schools, but is permissive of in-person education for lower grades where students are less vulnerable to COVID and more in need of in-person instruction. Going virtual for the upper grades is an option and staying in person for the lower grades pre-K and K if staffing permits is another route that I think you should consider. If you decide to go virtual at this point or after Thanksgiving, then I think it makes the most sense to return after New Year's and perhaps even towards the middle of the month of January. Return in December would be too soon after Thanksgiving and will only allow for a short time back in class in any case. I anticipate that a Thanksgiving related increase would take two to three weeks to to materialize. Similarly, returning immediately after New Year's may be too soon to see the holiday effect. So those are my comments, Mr. Feinberg. I'll be happy to take questions at this point.
Thank you, Dr. Brennan. Questions from the board? Dr. Crispin?
Thank you, Dr. Brennan. I had a few questions. So you spoke about hospitals and hospital capacity in our area. Where are we with testing and testing capabilities and contact tracing capabilities?
Testing capability is is better than it has been. It's increasing. Wouldn't say all the time, but it's certainly in a better place than we were over the summer and and much, much better than it was in the spring. We still do not have enough testing capacity to do the things that I think are really essential to to keep the schools open. We would like, for example, to be able to test faculty. We would like to be able to test athletic teams. As this wave of the pandemic proceeds, there are greater and greater demands on on testing capacity because we have more symptomatic individuals and we have more exposed individuals. So, you know, the things that we need to do to to keep the economy open, you know, testing people at workplaces and and, you know, testing students and teachers in schools is still a little bit beyond our grasp at this point. I think as we get into the beginning of the new year, we will have significantly more testing capacity as as hospitals in particular ramp up. I think there's also more strain on commercial laboratories at this point, too. I heard someone told me today that they were traveling back from Cleveland. We're trying to be compliant with Secretary's new mandate for testing within 72 hours on return from out-of-state travel and said that they had literally contacted every CVS between Cleveland and Harrisburg en route and hadn't been able to get an appointment until sometime next week. So that's the kind of demand that's happening on on testing right now. And I'm sorry, there was a second part to it.
Contact tracing is the other one. Where are we at?
There's so much, there's so much transmission going on right now that it's really exceeding the capacity of the health departments to to keep up with it. And I think a lot of that burden is falling on the organizations in which cases are being reported to help the health departments by trying to, you know, identify those who are who are most in contact. And then we're reliant on the the index cases to, you know, to be forthcoming about whom they've been with and whom they might have exposed.
Okay, thank you. And then I had another question. It's not directly related to schools, but it's sort of adjacent to schools, which is for virtual days, a lot of people are, or I guess aftercare programs, people are using. You know, I know there's a program at the Y and there are some, you know, K enrichment programs and other kinds of like childcare centers where people are sending their kids on their virtual days. And I guess I was wondering sort of if, you know, given the level of community transmission, you know, where where are we with that, the safety of that piece as well?
I'm aware of, you know, one of the challenges in all of this is that there is not a requirement for reporting except to report an individual case to the health department. So, you know, I've been on with other school boards where, in fact, it may have been Mr. Feinberg that said this at the last time that I was on, that you were following newspapers around the state and and, you know, that's, that's how we find out about school outbreaks or by word of mouth. So you know, the the individual cases that occur in schools or daycare centers or at the Y might be reported, but we don't have line of sight to institutional occurrences. So it makes it challenging. I'm aware of at least a couple instances where those daycare programs have resulted in in transmissions and and others where there have been exposure situations resulting in quarantine of a pre-K class and the and the teachers. But overall, my impression is, and it's, and it's an impression, is that there have not been a lot of transmissions in those in those settings.
Thank you.
Next up, Antoinette.
Thanks. Thanks again, Dr. Brennan, for for being here tonight and speaking with us about all of this. So, you know, I think, I think you you said a lot and about what we can do and what the options are. What is your recommendation of with our numbers specifically what we do?
Yeah, I think you don't want to be behind the curve on this. I think it's, it'll be easy to go virtual if you have a significant outbreak or you have to, you know, shut down a building because so many teachers have been exposed in a, you know, in a lunch break situation and and someone gets sick. So I think with the trends that, you know, we're seeing right now, I think that it's reasonable to go to to virtual for the period through the holidays. Now, the one caveat I would say is that the information that I have suggests that the township has done pretty well with, you know, discipline around the around the public health measures. So, you know, you may want to try to push it further, but I don't think, this is knocking on our doors, you know, the, I don't think you're going to be able to keep it out in a in a meaningful way over the over the next several months.
And so with with a return to virtual, is the goal to stop spread within our schools? Is the goal to stop community spread being it happens within the schools and then goes into the community? What what are the goals behind going to all virtual?
Yeah, the, it would not be to create control of the community, in my opinion. I think that, you know, we need, you know, forceful leadership on community issues and you know, really strong messages. I don't, I don't think that in the short term, although I haven't followed all of the the legal maneuvers closely, I know that the governor's the governor's mandates in the spring were ruled unconstitutional and his seeking an injunction against that decision was not allowed. And so there's, you know, there's an appeal going on, so that limits what they can do. But I do think there are more important things that can be done in the in the community that will be impactful on the pandemic. I think, you know, the school situation I expect will get worse. I think you're going to have more cases coming into the schools from the community and eventually you're going to start to see transmissions within classrooms and and possibly to teachers. And, you know, the teachers are not in the highest risk age group, but certainly some will have conditions that will put them at greater risk. So in my view, it would be about protecting the school community.
Thank you. And you you mentioned that a lot of what's happening is happening in the community. And so I think you mentioned small private gatherings, household contacts. You know, I think there's a lot of different things that people can do. What are the most important things that people can do? You know, I know that we had the Secretary of State come and say masking and they have all the, you know, different new masking rules. Is that the most important thing that people can do? Is the most important thing that people can do? Just stay at home? I mean, I think a lot of people are getting COVID fatigue. And so, and I think that's where we're going to get a lot of anger from. If we move, if we move toward this decision, so, you know, just, yeah, what should people be doing?
Yeah, there's a lot of COVID fatigue, you know. Everybody has it. The two most important things in terms of public health measures are masks and distancing, in my view. When you're, when you're out in public or when you're in school or indoors, keeping a distance and wearing a mask, those are the most important things. In households, it's important for the near and the intermediate term to stay within your household. Unfortunately, you know, it's really easy to transmit this virus. And I have been struck how often transmissions occur with, you know, seemingly insignificant decisions, you know, giving somebody a ride. But it's somebody outside of your household. It's a carpool and it's somebody outside of your carpool or outside of your household. And and then, you know, the next day, that person has symptoms, they're tested and everybody, everybody in the carpool is positive. I've seen that, I can't tell you time, how many times I've seen it. Many, many times, small dinner gatherings, four or five people. There's maybe some wine, people are talking louder, they're closer, you have to have your mask off. And and when you're doing that with people outside of your household, it creates the risk. You know, I've talked a lot about about the NBA. The NBA is at one extreme. You know, it's a, it's a wealthy organization. It was able to create a tremendous pod that really was disciplined, very disciplined. It threw people out of the pod if they if they violated it. And, you know, we're not going to be able to accomplish that in in private life. But, you know, it's an example of what it takes. It's, you know, it's, you know, to really, you know, control it. It takes zero tolerance for those kind of breaks in in protocol. So in public, distancing and masking and at home, sticking within your household.
Thanks. And then this is, this is my last question and it gets to, I think, part of what Laura was was getting to as well about these third parties who are sort of acting, you know, as as childcare providers, but also overseeing virtual learning. And and I think that we've heard multiple times by by doctors, I think, from the governor's office, from different folks, saying that schools are actually the safest place to be. And so you know, I feel like we're getting sort of torn onto both sides here because we see, you know, on the one hand, I think you have very credible evidence that that this is, this is coming. You know, more and more community spread means more and more people coming into the schools, more likely that it's going to transmit. But then on the other hand, I think schools are doing really well with 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 trying to to curb the spread and we've had people come in the schools positive but not transmit. And so, you know, that sort of dichotomy is really confusing for a lot of people. And and how do we, how do we grapple with that and and put that into action?
Well, you know, I think there is a middle path that I alluded to, which is to keep the the most vulnerable and those most in need of development in school. They're also, they're the least vulnerable in terms of the pandemic, but they're most vulnerable in terms of not having in-person instruction and and interaction. So that's, that's certainly an option. I think that, you know, I'm anticipating and I think others are anticipating what's to come with this trend. I don't, I don't see it peaking at the moment. And I have a lot of concern about what's going to happen over the Thanksgiving, the Thanksgiving holiday because because people are so fatigued and will want to get together with, you know, with neighbors and and family. So I think that that middle path is a is a reasonable one. If you choose to stay in school, if your, you know, judgment is that if you choose to stay in person, if your judgment judgment is that you have things really tight and you've done very well. And I know that there are, you know, more than a handful of cases now in the in the district, then you might consider, you might consider pressing on. But, you know, the hospitals, you know, I think of in an analogous way, we are, you know, preparing hard, we're stockpiling the things that we need, we're having a lot of discipline and we're considering about whether we should roll back some of the procedures, the normal procedures that we do so that we can accommodate COVID. We could do all of that and do it very well and still be overrun, not because of lack of planning or lack of judgment, but because conditions in the community are such that it just overwhelms us. And that's, that's the concern that I see for the schools. I think it's going to be hard to keep it, you know, to a manageable level without transmission going forward over the next month or six weeks.
Thank you so much again. I really appreciate you being here.
Next up, Ari.
Hi, Dr. Brennan. I look forward to a meeting where we don't have to say thank you for attending. Thank you for attending. You said schools are not a major driver. Where are you saying that? Is that in Haverford Township? Are you saying that in southeastern PA, the state of Pennsylvania, the East Coast, or nationally, internationally?
Well, when I say schools, I'm talking about, you know, elementary and secondary schools. And, you know, I'll go back to the caveat that I I offered, I think, to Laura, which is that we don't have good reconnaissance. We don't have good institutional reporting. But, you know, with my ear to the ground, I'm I'm not seeing and, you know, contact with public health officials and and schools. I'm not hearing about significant outbreaks in schools, major outbreaks in schools. That's not to say that there haven't been any, but the the drivers appear to be the other activities that I described in my comments. And I'm talking about this region. I'm talking about this region.
Mid-Atlantic, the
Southeastern Pennsylvania. I'm really, you know, paying the most attention there. I can't, I can't speak to Mid-Atlantic.
Okay, so just southeastern Pennsylvania. Great. You know, I have so many questions and I don't want to monopolize everyone's time nor this entire board meeting. I think we all see the news, we hear the news and we're listening intently to you. I just want to say I really believe in this community and I believe in its ability to do what it needs to do to get the types of services that it needs or wants or requires or feels like it's entitled to. And that means masking, that means hand washing, that means staying six feet apart. That means behaving appropriately and maturely and understanding the risks, which is the stick in this scenario. And the stick is having to shut schools down. But if schools are not a major driver and everyone in school is wearing masks, washing their hands, using sanitizer, staying six feet apart, I do wonder, you just said something about transmission coming in school. Are you, are you saying you can still get coronavirus if we follow all these protocols that are supposed to deter the spread?
It's pretty hard to do this perfectly. You know, as much as we, you know, understand that you have to wear masks, lunchrooms are a real hazard. You know, we see that in healthcare. We've seen it a number of times in schools. I know about a
We don't have lunchroom. Sorry, sorry to interrupt you. We don't have lunchrooms in six to 12.
Break rooms, you know, wherever people gather. So if people gather to have meals, to have have their lunch break, they have to take off their mask and it, you know, it becomes, you know, it's a, it's a social moment. So, you know, if you could do it perfectly, I think you would, you know, you would do very, very well. You know, masks, there's, there's published data now on the on the doubling time in all 50 states following the implementation of the standard public health measures, distancing, masking, hand hygiene, those kinds of things. And the change in the doubling time, the increase in the doubling time is is dramatic. It goes from a few days out to weeks or more than weeks for the doubling time of the of the epidemic. So, you know, and I think when the the sense of urgency is greatest as it was in the in the first wave, we have greater adherence to those practices, but it wanes and people slip. And so, you know, I think the more and more trans, the greater and greater degree of transmission we have in the community will lead to, you know, greater and greater opportunities for those slips to lead to transmissions in the schools.
Well, for anyone listening out there, let's do what we need to do to help stop the spread and stay disciplined. You cannot let your guard down.
That's a great
You can't get lazy. You can't get complacent. You have to stay on top of your coronavirus game. The weather's not going to get better. We're going to be driven indoors. And that means we have to be more judicious, more careful and hopefully get more carrots and less sticks.
It's a good message.
Next up, Bridget.
Hi, thank you. You quoted some of the incidents in the community and the positivity rates with a incidence over 200 and a positivity rate of over 9%. And I feel like at this point, we're already seeing strain in our school system and in our community to handle the contact tracing and the staffing and and those kinds of things. You've indicated that we're not at the peak and the, you know, the trends are continuing. I'm someone who on Friday afternoons looks at the Chester County Health website to see what the numbers are. Do you have a sense of where the incidence rate and the positivity rate may get to? So that we can kind of, if we know what we're feeling at this point, like how much more of a burden might we experience?
Well, and I want to make a corollary comment to this. But, you know, in the spring, the positivity rate was over 30% at one point. And we're at 9% now. Now, we had much less testing, so we have a bigger, you know, we have a bigger denominator today. But, you know, in the city, the positivity rate is 17% at this point. In our health system, when we test symptomatic patients, the positivity rate is 27%. So I think, you know, the positivity rate depends on the population that you're testing. And to the extent that it's all comers and you have a bigger denominator, you're going to have, you're going to have a lower rate. So, you know, I expect it's going to go, you know, considerably considerably higher than than this. The the corollary comment that I wanted to make is that the the challenge may become as much staffing as it is transmission in the schools. Because, you know, and I'm seeing this in in other industries. We're seeing it in healthcare. I was on with the with the Health Commissioner in the hour before this meeting started with the Philadelphia Health Commissioner, with the Chief Medical Officers from around the city. And everybody talked about the challenges and it's not, it's not transmission in healthcare settings. It's transmissions in the community. And the staff then go out where they come in, they come into work and may be positive and expose people in the workplace. And then you have 10 or 12 people on a single unit that are wiped out and quarantined for 14 days. And maybe none of them get sick, but they have to be, they have to be quarantined. So I think, you know, the transmission in the schools is only part of the issue. It's, and and we've seen this in some offices that have gone back, you know, have, you know, stopped remote work. We've seen it in in healthcare workplaces. And I think there are similar challenges in schools where you're going to have, you know, you're going to wipe out a whole cohort of of teachers or or an entire class as a result. So that is, that's an important corollary issue here, I think. You know, in hospitals, you know, there's a lots of concern, are we going to have enough beds? I'm concerned about whether we're going to have enough people. That's the, that's the challenge because the burden of all of this is significant. The burden in delivering healthcare is significant. The burden of just living day to day with COVID in a school environment, I'm sure, is is significant. And it's, you know, it burns people out.
Yeah, and I think the district is is starting to experience that and just hearing that there's more to come, more preponderance of the virus in the community. I think will be a real strain on on our staffing and and systems, as you said.
There are a few, there are a few, to back to Ari's question, there are a few school outbreaks. But more of what I hear about are cases being brought to the school. And and, you know, a child is exposed by a parent, the child is positive, they come to school, then there's a quarantine of a, you know, of a classroom.
When you mentioned about the positive case, that is my second question on our district. Um, on our district website, we are tracking and reporting, um. People, either students or staff who were in our school, um, in a time they were contagious and, um. Then tested positive. Um, there's a a question that some people have about why aren't we also trying to track and report? The people who were in contact and the number of people that were quarantined because of that. Maybe single incident in a school. Um, I guess my question is, can we take the. Um, the reporting that we've got with the positive cases and then look at the the community spread data? Um, as a a kind of a better informed sense of what's going on? Or should there be more of a effort either by the county or the schools to, um. Be reporting and tracking like number of people that are quarantining or number of people that have been identified as close contacts?
I think it, I think information like that, you know, I'd need to think through a little more exactly. Um, or or hear from you exactly what would be useful information. But. I do think there's a, there's a real dearth of information about what's going on in the schools broadly. As I said, there's no, there's no requirement for public reporting on an on an institutional basis. Just. If if, you know, if a child in the sixth grade is positive, that child gets reported and ends ends up in the statistics and is in the. You know, ten to nineteen-year-old age group, but you don't know that that child was from, you know, the Linwood School or the Middle School or or wherever. So, uh, I think that, uh, knowing, um, the the number of cases coming out of a school by building, by district. And the number of people that get quarantined, which is, I think, a measure of detection. And, uh, and impact on the on the school community. I think that would be, I think that would be useful information. Uh, it could be burdensome on the school to track all of that. Uh, but I think it would be, uh, helpful to, helpful to know. I think I I think it would really help with decision making.
Thank you.
Next up, Kristen.
Hi, uh, thank you, Dr. Brennan. So I think like most of us, I'm tired, I'm exhausted. And I'm not even in the medical profession. I'm on maternity leave and I'm just tired of all of this. Um, I don't know what else we need to tell people to get them to do the right thing. I don't understand why anyone would be having sleepovers or doing carpooling or getting together or having Thanksgiving giving, et cetera. Um, I want to do nice things too. I want to go back to normal, but we can't right now. We're living in a global pandemic. Um, I think it's a real testament to our staff and to our district, um, that we haven't seen transmission in our schools. Um, they are following protocols, they're doing what needs to be done and they need to be commended for that. Um, especially under these circumstances. I mean, we are talking life and death, life or death matters here. Um, we're also, you know, so we're not seeing much transmission yet. We still have a number of students and staff who are quarantining or isolating. Um, and many of those teachers and students are still going to work. They are showing up virtually, they're zooming in. Um, but in the back of their mind, they're wondering, are they going to get COVID? Um, you know, they've been exposed. I just, there's so many layers of stress here and I just really worry about the sustainability. Um, I know a lot of families want their children in school. I want my child in school. Um, but. It's just, we're living in two-week cycles right now. You know, you might be exposed, you got to take, take a step back and just wait and see what happens. And it's frankly, it's scary. Um, I don't necessarily have a question. I just, just want to express my frustration. And I don't know if there's anything else we can tell people. What else can we tell people to help us get back to some sort of normal? Um.
It's tough to sustain what we've been living through for, uh, nine months now. I think what I would offer as hope is that, um, is that vaccines are coming. And, um. You know, the first two vaccines that have been reported out have had astonishingly positive results. I I was anticipating that we would see vaccine efficacies. Like the influenza vaccine, which is about sixty percent effective in a good year. And and that's pretty good, actually. You know, with sixty percent effectiveness, if lots of people get vaccinated, you've got a lot of immunity in the community. And, uh, you will, um, protect a lot of people, save a lot of lives, actually. But these vaccines are in excess of ninety percent effective. Now, the production issues are another challenge, but it's coming. And, you know, we're expecting to have, uh, the first of the vaccines. Uh, perhaps by the middle of December, uh, maybe January first. Uh, not in very large quantities, but they will come after that. And with that kind of effectiveness. I think it will, I think we have a reasonable chance of having herd immunity to a significant degree. And. So we we need to get to, get through a few more months. Uh, and, you know, there'll be winter months and it'll, there'll be dark and long days. Uh, long nights, but, um, I think that, uh, you know, hope is coming. And, uh, you know, if we can endure this together and kind of lock arms and and, uh, you know, continue to. Do our best on the public health measures until we get there with herd immunity, uh, I think we can come out the other side of it. I don't think. I don't think our economy and our schools can really recover until we control this. Uh, I I really think that, uh, you know, we're, we're not going to tough it out, we're not going to get natural herd immunity and do well. We'll just have a lot more deaths. And e- even as well as we do now in medical care and reducing the mortality. There'll be a lot more deaths. Uh, so, uh, I think that, uh, you know, my message would be that, uh, there is hope.
Other questions from the board?
I said, that's a good place to leave it.
Stop over ahead.
Dr. Brennan, uh, you know, I I was the one that mentioned the newspapers last time you were here and. And I'll I'll mention them again, you know, I I'm seeing, uh, districts all over the state, large and small, uh, that are. Uh, switching to all virtual, uh, for for at least a couple of weeks following, uh, Thanksgiving. It's. It's not just the the larger districts or the, uh, suburban districts, uh, small towns even. Uh, another thing I found interesting is that, uh. In Lancaster, there's a reporter who who actually is following, uh, caseloads. In schools, uh, and he's now, today he reported that in Lancaster County Schools, they now have. Four hundred and sixty reported cases. Uh, so, you know, unfortunately, there there's, there doesn't seem, you know, the state. Punted on this and isn't really supplying us with anything. Um, but, you know, it's out there, um, and, you know, I, my fellow board members have. I think done a pretty good job of trying to encourage, uh, our community to. Take the kinds of precautions that they need to. I think we all understand the strong desire to be sitting around a table with our families. Uh, for for Thanksgiving with families, extended families and, you know, it's just not something that. We can afford to do right now, so.
Can I just make a comment about, uh, what you just said about Lancaster?
Sure.
We have a hospital out there and I know, uh, and Lancaster is a lovely place. I love the hospital. I love the community. Uh, I don't, uh, uh, mean to disparage it. However, there has been a great deal of opposition. To, um, the kind of practices that we've been talking about. And it doesn't come as a surprise to me that there are four hundred and sixty cases in the schools out there. They have more inpatients with COVID than any of our hospitals. And, uh, and and they have as many as they had at the peak in the spring. None of our other hospitals do. So, you know, it's, it's, it speaks to the community engagement on these, on these issues.
You know, and I'd al- also like to point out that, you know, our state legislature today, I believe it was in the, in the House. Uh, this, the Speaker or whoever had the gavel, uh. Cut off, uh, one of the legislators from speaking because he wasn't wearing a tie. In that very same chamber, you know, more than half of the members of the legislature were not masked.
Yeah. So. Need leadership.
We do. Well, thank you again, uh, very much, uh, on behalf of the board and the district and our community. We really appreciate, uh, the work that you you're doing and the time that you spend with us.
My pleasure. Take care and have a happy Thanksgiving as best you can.
You too, sir.